So we don't have a quorum tonight for the planning commission, so this is going to be an informational meeting. And so I think we're just going to talk about what I've learned about the bike path and Nikki and I have discussed it over the course of a couple of weeks now too. So if you want to weigh in with your own experiences, you should feel free to.
Hi Maria, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Hello, yeah, sorry, I'm in transit, so I will be listening, listening, so I'll try to weigh in if I feel necessary, if it feels necessary.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
So I my take on this whole situation is that like when you, I feel like when you start asking people about it, they're instantly looking for solutions. And I don't think that's like the first stage of this. This should be figuring out what's actually happening. And then deciding whether it's, you know, worth city resources to address the issue.
Could you give me just a little bit of background? Because I, I know you mentioned that there's, it seems like there's some safety things and maybe some kids have been accosted. Could you just maybe step back?
So that's what I wanted, yeah. So I think today, as I was gonna say, I was like, I think this should only be about discussing what's happening.
Yeah.
Because I think the reality is that people who are of a certain age, a certain gender, aren't experiencing it the way that others are. And especially if you're a motorist, this is a part of town that you don't even see. So I can run through, I have a spreadsheet here of people I've talked to. And they've shared their experiences. So the first one is an 11 year old boy who bicycles around town. And he was just saying that his parents have explicitly told him not to use it.
Not to use the bike path?
Not to use a bike path. And he bikes everywhere. A girl who is 10, who she would walk with a bunch of other kids. So this is three friends that are walking to field hockey practice. Several times, men would yell things at them and ask them questions, try to engage them. She said once a seventh grader had something really bad said to her, and she refused to tell me what was said to the seventh, you know, this is a 12 year old.
Yeah, it's embarrassing.
And I'm like an adult. You know? So then after that incident, they stopped walking on the bike path to get to the high school because it was so scary. But again, this is a 12 year old that apparently had something yelled at her. And interestingly, I asked after this whole discussion, I was like, wait a second, have you told your parents? And she hadn't. And I was like, do you not want me to tell your parents? And she kind of gave me a look like I do, you know, so it's like this like sense that they're doing, that these kids are doing something wrong by even using the bike path. You know what I mean? That they feel that they've done something wrong.
Like all the parents know that don't go on the bike path or something?
Everyone knows you don't go on the bike path.
Oh wow.
A woman in her 30s, this is near the co-op. So those two other issues were near the transit center. A woman in her 30s was walking with a friend near the co-op, men started hollering sexual comments at her. Talking about her body, including her ass. So obviously, they felt entirely unsafe. Another girl who's 15 near the transit center walks on the path daily to get to school with their friends repeatedly harassed. Men start following them, yelling out to ask how old, how old they are. Making like kissy faces at them. Again, this is like 14, 15 year olds. A couple of times, she said it led to really scary situations, but then they saw that there were teenage boys walking with them, and so they were left alone. So like, even that situation, you're like, so talking to high schoolers, they think that they are adults who can handle this. And you're like, you're not, you're still a child. Another girl.
Describe most of them as the the people creating the problems are mostly homeless, just normal? I mean, is it, is it the same group of?
I mean, people don't know.
Okay.
And especially children, like they're not they're not focusing on like what exactly the one guy who was saying this stuff to them looked like to distinguish them between the other.
They're just trying to get away probably. They're like, let's get the heck out of here.
They're trying to get away.
Cause people will ask me if I'm talking about it with like other folks, you know, like was, was it the homeless or was it just somebody who was just?
Well, unless there's like a tent nearby, you don't really know their situation. And I've, I have had that comment from like several people who are like, I don't know, like I wouldn't be able to like call the police about this because I don't know who it was. But it's just like a massive people yelling things at them. So I'm not even halfway through my list yet.
Okay, keep going. Yo, keep going.
Like so a girl who's 11 also walks and cycles around town, same field hockey. Her parents have explicitly told her not to use the bike path. A woman in her 40s, and this has happened near the high school. So you know, the bike path extends near the high school. She was walking her dog with a friend and a cyclist swerved to miss her dog and ended up in like a snowbank. And he started cursing her out, like everything under the book, you know? And then he biked away, but then he, when he got to the intersection, he stopped, turned around, came back at them and started screaming at them that if he ever saw them on the bike path again, he was gonna kill her and her dog. Another time, a girl 15, she was walking with her mother. This is near Stardew Gies. So again, like think about that other stretch of the bike path. A person jumped out from under that abandoned railcar, that like rusted up railcar and ran towards them, threatening them.
My gosh.
A woman in her 30s regularly runs on the bike path. This has happened near the transit center. She started using the train tracks instead of the bike path because it's so unsafe. She's also considered whether she should start carrying mace on her runs to keep her safe. I was gonna say another related. A woman did call up the police, asked them about would it be safe for her daughter to walk to school on the bike path? And whoever she spoke to at the police station told her that he wouldn't recommend children using the bike path. Like not in groups and definitely not alone. So a woman in her 30s again, running alone. This is, this happened near the high school. A man was on a bike and seemed to be on drugs. And she actually stopped her run and turned around instead of trying to interact, you know, trying to run past him. This was a significant situation where as a woman leading a tour group in her, I'm guessing 30s or 40s, near the trans center. And Amopular Alive has been hosting a bunch of river walks. Do you know what this is Mike? Like
Nope.
I think it's a weekly walk to kind of address, to reconnect the city to its, to the river and talking about like ecological health of the river. And they regularly have like 30 to 50 people in these tour groups. So she says as part of the tour, they often, they won't even go near the bike path. They'll just stay on like the parking lot side to give people space. And a couple of weeks ago, a group of people that regularly hang out there approached them and like sat in and listened to her lecture. And then started yelling angrily at the group when no one would give them any donations or anything. And I forget her exact quote was it's also crude and I'm sorry that I have to like say it, but I think it gives you a sense of like what people are dealing with. Okay, so he was yelling at them. So you'll stop to listen to this horse shit, but you won't help homeless people. Again, this is like a group of like 50 people who just wanna like learn about the river. Moving on. A man in his 40s was using the bike path and a man approached and physically threatened to punch him. A boy. He goes to the high school. So this started when he was 14, when he started at the high school. So he says men regularly harass him and his friends walking to school. If there's girls with them, they'll get catcalled. I mean, he just acted as if this is just like, this happens every day. He also, a different time witnessed a man overdosing and had to run to find a police officer to get help. Again, this is a boy who's like 14. A girl who's 14 says she actually doesn't use a bike path at all because of all the bad stories she's heard at school from friends who've had experiences on the bike path. They kind of both said that if like you go to the high school and ask kids there, like they will all tell you similar stories. And then my, I think, I think I told you like my own situation where I took a bunch of kids on the bike path. And the men started following us and then like eventually, like we were trying to get away. It's like the thing, and everyone just like trying to get away. And it was me and a bunch of like maybe first graders, like little kids. And by the end, they're just like, well, you're never coming back this way again, are you? So like, and they're like, are you a teacher? What are you? You know, it was just like a very strange, like let it go, you know? So I mean, I feel, I find it all very troubling that this is just like happening.
How did you get, how did you get your data? Did you put something on front porch forum and ask for stories or how did you?
Anybody.
You just asked anybody. You just, so this is anecdotal. You went out and you just talked to people and this is the kind of data you were able to get?
Yes. I never had someone tell me that they walk or run on the bike path and have not had an issue.
So I walk on the bike path.
Yeah.
I see the strange people, but they don't, they don't bother. And I've been out there with my wife too, but I, I mean, I see, I can see where, I can see where the issues would come up.
But they've never said anything to you?
They don't say anything to me.
They don't say anything? They, they don't even?
No, no.
No, I guess.
I just have that look.
So this is the thing that's interesting is that I'll have you know, I mean, I have had, I've used the bike path myself with my family and no one has said things to us. But then I'm like, oh, so it's only if I have a six foot two man with me that they'll leave me alone. And I think that's the reality of it. It's just like, if you are vulnerable, like you will get harassed. But yeah, I didn't hear from any girls who use a big path and could do it safely.
Yeah.
Girls either completely avoid it or their parents have told them not to use it. Or they have a story to tell.
Yeah, wow.
And also for like young, I mean, younger women, like in their 30s. So.
And some of your stories, there are multiple, there's groups of people and they're still having, that's not like groups.
I mean, essentially, I mean, the one group of like the tour group, that was a massive group. But yeah, even with like friends, they're getting bothered. And the thing is, I don't think people use it without a group of friends, like they don't think it's safe to go. They don't go there by themselves.
It's such a beautiful resource. So, so Mike, what do, what do, what do we? What can we do as a planning commission? I mean, I don't, I know you had mentioned maybe having somebody from the police department. They obviously couldn't get anybody here tonight.
Well, I, we were also just trying to keep things. As Maria said, we're just trying to get information at this point. And you know, I'll bring back these topics and stories and see what the, the input from the enforcement side is and what they already know about and what they may already be working on and what they can and can't do. I think.
I feel like I've seen some Amopular Police on bikes, but I don't know that I've ever actually seen them on the exercise trail.
On bikes, really? I've seen them on foot. I've seen them do foot patrol downtown.
He actually mentioned that, I guess they used to be on bikes.
Yeah, they have, they have a bike patrol. Covid kind of blew everything up. But I know they used to have bikes, they used to do a lot of walking in the downtown. I don't know the full schedule of where things are at at this point. So there's, there is, there's obviously the enforcement side, but as Maria sent around a whole bunch of documents and stuff, there's also design things and things we can look at. And I think it's gonna come down to a solution that's a combination of things that we will have to look at. And that's why I was asking about, you know, is it just certain, you know, is it just the homeless or is it everybody or is it this? Because you know, they'll, they'll wanna try to narrow it down and narrow it down by area, you know, if you get past the co-op, is it not as bad as you're heading out of town or is it still unsafe out there?
I haven't seen anybody out there. I mean, I think it's, I think you have, I mean, I think, I think it's people that are homeless or unhoused. There's that, what's the little day center that they can go to on?
On Stonecutter's Way, yeah, there's.
What, what is that? It seems like.
Like another way.
It's, yes, it seems like there's a little bit of a flow that comes, you know, from there and extends all the way, you know, down to the co-op. There's some benches and stuff and.
Yeah.
I see a lot.
I, I haven't had issues.
And then I see a lot by the transit.
I've had people say things on the transit center side or just do things that are inappropriate on.
And, and it's also a little bit trashy over there too, just.
So this is my, so I was, as I was saying, I think there's like planning solutions here. Cause I think, I don't think law enforcement alone can do anything. Cause like as soon as they sweep an area, I mean, 20 minutes later, why wouldn't someone just come back?
They just come back.
Whereas like on the co-op stretch, like I also run on the bike path every day. And I don't see people loitering like that. But I think it's like an entirely different environment. Like there's like a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of car traffic. It's just like a very active part of the city. Especially because the co-op is there. So there's like constantly like people like coming in and out and there's businesses there. But that section that is near the trans center just has a lot of like blind turns.
Yeah.
And even the, I think the berm is there for the river hazard regulations, I'm guessing. And even that kind of creates this, like, it's like a very secluded spot, which I think creates that feeling of unease.
Sense of danger.
Yeah. And there actually is, it actually is dangerous.
Yeah.
But I think it kind of like creates this it's almost like a cul-de-sac, you know, like you don't wanna go through there because it doesn't feel safe. Like the sightlines are poor. They're often sitting under like tall brush and shaded trees. So they're also kind of like, people are hidden.
Right.
Which also creates that sense of unease. I mean, the one case of like that trail, the train car. That's like a very clear.
That's, that's crazy.
Why is, I don't know why it's there. But that is like a very clear there's a clear fix. But it's a situation where there's like somewhere for somebody to hide.
Yeah.
And they can jump out at you.
Yeah.
See, the whole bike path right now over there is quite overgrown.
Yeah.
I don't know why that is at the moment.
Yeah. So I think there's stuff like that that could be done, just like regular cleanup. Yeah. I mean, there's also literally trash all over
Yeah.
that part of the bike path. And I'm guessing.
There was, there was a proposal to put up a fence on that side of the bike path. That would go along and help to, to try to keep. They were having, the, the council in the city was having, were having issues with the homeless camping down there. So they were trying to keep them out of that area because we have to then go down and clean everything up and, and it's unsafe to go down and clean things up. But they eventually did not vote to spend the money to put the fence up. So there are solutions. Cause yes, I mean, if you're walking on the path in most other areas, you've got the road and you've got open. You can see what's going on around you. As you're going through the transit center, it's you and the brush and a bank.
Yeah.
And so you don't have that line of sight of what's going on right beside you.
And a not very active parking lot too. Cause I think the, I mean, there's parking all along Stonecutters Way, which is very active, but I think helps you know, with like having eyes on the street kind of a thing, like the Jane Jacobs idea. But the parking lot over there isn't very active. I think it's next to the transit center, right? It's connected through the transit center.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just for transit center residents.
Oh, the one that behind Capitol Plaza?
No, the one behind Capitol Plaza.
Oh, you're talking about.
Public, yeah, the one.
I can picture that, what you're talking about now. I just, I often cut off the bike path into the Capitol Plaza parking lot.
That's what everybody says, yeah.
Unless I'm pushing a stroller.
Or they go on to the train tracks.
Because of that reason, you think it's just scuzzy and you don't wanna walk your family through it? Is that why?
Yeah.
I know. And I mean, we used to use the bike path as like cause if people aren't using it, then it's like a, it's downward spiral, you know? But I don't know if I would use it alone with the kids at this point.
After the last meeting, I, I did bike.
Did you?
On the bike path.
At night.
Eight o'clock at night. There's nobody there. It's totally dead. It's totally fine. Yeah.
Was it well lit?
No.
No.
It's not lit at all. But I have quite a bright light on the.
Solution of these situations is like
Lighting.
Have it well lit.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a couple, a couple of spots that have been identified in town that the lighting is not good, even off the bike path.
What are, what are the hours that they're, the Good Sam guys hosting versus not?
That's only in the winter months from November 1st to about May.
Oh, it's only in the winter?
Yeah, it's only a winter shelter. It's an emergency shelter.
So where are folks going?
I, they'll have to find places. In some cases, some of them may have been camping, some of them may have been up at you know, in the motel program. And they might come down during the day and hang out and go back up.
It's just the winter. That, that thing's just, I didn't realize that. Okay.
So that's where, that's where the permanent shelter will come in and will help. If we can get a permanent shelter put in, because then we've got more space to have year round. And you can start working with people. It's, it's difficult to be in just a temporary shelter. The Good Sam will, will say that.
I know, it's curious whether people would say that the bike path feels safer and during those months when Good Samaritan is operating the shelter. I mean, I don't.
I know I used to see a lot of folks up at Hubbard, you know, on the way to Hubbard Park, but I think I mean, they'd camp out and loiter up in there, but I think a bunch of that state land and they started enforcing.
Right.
You, you probably know better than I do, but I think they, I think they kind of got chased out.
And there are a number, yeah, there are a number of homeless. We, we don't wanna to group everybody into one basket. There are a lot of people who are homeless who are just in unfortunate situations and they, like everybody else, just wanna say stay, stay safe and find a spot. And in a lot of ways, a lot of times, if somebody's out behind the Capitol or in different places and they're not bothering people, they're generally kind of left alone.
Yeah, right.
Cause you need to have a place. You're not bothering anyone. You're not making a mess. You're, you're not being a problem. So usually those folks by, by the fact that they're still there, it's probably a fact that they're not bothering people.
Right.
But as soon as people start bothering folks on the paths, then usually they get cleaned out pretty quick.
Well, I, I mean, this is my other.
But this is public property, you know, there that.
That if this, if this behavior was happening on the corner of Main Street and State Street, like the town would not abide it for a second. That 12 year olds are getting sexually harassed by men. The fact that it's happening like out of sight to most people or to most, I wouldn't even say most people, most motorists is why it's allowed to continue. If this was happening on the state house steps, it would never fly. But the fact that it's happening on a non-motorized path that mostly like children are using to get to high school. And like, I think it comes down to like who we value as society, you know, like what do we value? And this is a area of the city that has been allowed to become unsafe for kids. And people are looking the other way. Which is like, it's just so disturbing to me. Especially considering the millions that was invested, you know, to like create this beautiful piece of infrastructure that would safely get children to the high school. And it's been, and that was, that was part of the reasoning for building it is like to get kids to high school. And it is currently functioning as like the opposite of getting kids safely to high school. They're being exposed to behaviors and aggression that they otherwise wouldn't get if they were on a city street. So I think the fact that people are, and I don't, again, we don't, I don't know that they're homeless. I don't know who these people are.
It doesn't sound like all of them were. Some of them, the bike rider didn't sound like he was the one who went down and turned around and came back. I mean, there are a couple of instances that weren't.
But it's this aggression that is allowed to continue and is going unchecked because people aren't going to the police about it because it doesn't rise to, they don't feel it rises to the level of a crime. Or it's happening to children who don't wanna tell. So the other children that I mentioned, they also don't tell their parents that they, that they've had these experiences on the bike path. So the, the girl who said that she and her friends get, you know, questioned about how old they are. They're 14. They don't tell their parents what's happening. So it is it's just like, it is shocking to me that this is happening and everyone's kind of like knows about it. And it's been allowed to continue for, at this point, years in these children's lives, you know? So I don't think the solution is that we need more law enforcement or if they have a home and they wanna be aggressive to kids. I think it is just like, how do we get people to stop being aggressive on the bike path? Having a shelter isn't there's something else going on if someone's being aggressive with a child, you know?
Yeah, and I'm not a psychiatrist or psychologist, so it's outside of my planning hat, so.
If they had a shelter to go to at night, I don't it's not, it's.
Well, there could be other people there. There could be predators there, right? They may not be homeless. They could just be like, this is the great place to go meet people.
And we can hang out and yell at all.
I mean, it sounds terrible, right? But we can pull up a little matrix and we can find all those sex offenders around us. I mean, you could do it.
What I mean, it's the loitering and the hanging out is not the issue.
And they, they could think like they're blending in with the homeless people. Nobody will ever even know who I am because I'm here with these other people, right?
But the loitering facilitates the, the ability to loiter there facilitates the.
I think like the unchecked behavior facilitates the aggression. Like that they do, they can get, whoever is doing this knows that they can get away with it.
Did, did you send something around that I didn't see? Mike, it sounded like you had some design ideas or something?
I sent, I think just to you and Art, to give you an idea of like where I thought.
You're like thinking like bench design or like, like the, the
Like.
Removing, removing some like brush.
Lighting.
Yeah, I can, I can send those, that link, that round.
I definitely think there's something to the idea that if you maintain a space.
Right.
You know, that keep that, that prevents some sort of downward spiral.
If you can like convince people to use the path again.
I've lived in other places. I don't know that it was a crime reason for it or a feeling of crime, but that there was like a day, my kids are grown, so I don't know. But there was a day, like it was like walk your kids to school day, right? And so like something like, I mean, I don't know, that's kind of a grassroots type thing, but it seems like if you had a day like that where everybody was out on a horse, right? That that would send a signal, this is an important real estate for us.
Something that was done, that would be done in San Francisco, whenever they wanted to protest. Like bike advocate to do this, when they wanted to protest like an unsafe street, somebody had like died there or had there been a severe accident. They would line, they would physically line the street in yellow shirts to protect the cyclists from cars. And so my husband, who's on the complete streets committee, we have talked about having safe routes to school. And just having people out in yellow shirts, like lining the path to school so that they could speak at the school safely. And to bring awareness that like this currently is not safe for them.
That's a good idea. Yeah, I like that.
Regular T-shirts.
Well, yeah, and having, yeah, monitor, basically path monitors out there.
But it's supposed, the idea is that it's supposed to show government that they're currently not making something safe. So like, it's to bring awareness, like we're all wearing yellow shirts, bring aware, like to bring safety, but then also to bring awareness. So like, this is not
Not good.
Not a good part of town. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think there are like a bunch of things that you can do. I think the question is like, what does the planning? Because it's like multifaceted. It's like law enforcement, it's social services. It's like the Department of Public Works. Like there are all these different people that have a hand in this. And then it's also just like straight up urban planning to me. Like what the space looks like, what the built environment looks like. Is there a rusted railcar just sitting in the middle of town?
So who owns the railcar?
I know. I'm sure there's a story there because it's Amopular.
So all of Stonecutter's Way is a, was a rail yard. That's what it was. Four or five lanes wide all the way down. Two sets of railroads actually came in, one that went out to Chelsea and ones that went out to Wells River or something, but now only the one that goes to Berry and it stops. So the railcar still sits on the old rail property. And so it really falls outside of our stuff, but Guy's Farm and Yard uses it for their storage of materials.
They actually stores, it's used.
Yeah, it's used.
Yep. I, I kind of considered a piece of public art.
I thought it was too.
Somebody else has considered it public art too.
Well, I wonder if they're, but this is again, like.
Should, should we pull back our, the public? I mean, I know we haven't gotten to the storyboard part. Should should we pull back our uh, the public? I mean, I know we haven't gotten to the storyboard part of it and we have plenty of time to comment, but the public safety, should we be talking about? You know, the public safety and some of these, there's, you know, we've got all kinds of. This is one space where we've got kids, but we've got all kinds of trail systems and all kinds of things that. Should we be addressing that somehow on our public safety plan? It was basically written by the police department, right? And and a consultant, so should should we insert something in there talking about that?
It's gonna be in the next chapters on in October.
In October, yeah, yeah.
It'll be the next chapter.
Something to look at.
And transportation is the one we're wrapping up right now, so.
Right.
But I think, yeah, I mean, I think that at some point, this is, this is a topic that goes beyond the planning commission. We can be a part of a bigger picture, I think. But I think this is ultimately going to be something that. Should be elevated more to the city council and city manager because it's going to take multiple departments and anytime you're. At that level.
That's the place to coordinate it.
Yeah, because it's gonna be hard. The planning commission trying to plan for a piece of infrastructure that's owned by public works, that's kind of part of the park system. That is also part of the recreation department. You're you're already in four, four departments right there.
But we can be an instigator, right? We can, we can, we can send a proposal to city council and it says that, you know, we think this is a. Already issued, this should be looked at by the city council.
Yes, certainly something that goes on and says through through our conversations. I mean, we're working on the city plan that says, you know, through our conversations. This is an issue that we have heard in our. Experience and and it needs to be elevated and needs to be addressed and. We think there are multiple solutions that need to be looked at, not just enforcement, but that's. Obviously, obviously enforcement will be one piece if there's there are problem people there, they're not going to stop. Then I'm sure the police would say they don't want us going out and trying to stop it.
Unless you're wearing a yellow T-shirt.
Right, yellow T-shirt.
Mary, did you go to the last city council meeting? I I feel like they, there was. I thought homelessness was a topic at the last, the last city council.
Yes, it it came up at that one. It's come up before. Most of it's been targeted on Country Club Road because we had. We had some folks that had been living out there. It hadn't been a problem, so everybody left them to to stay out there, but then suddenly. It got overwhelmed with a lot of other people coming in who were more problem.
For people are using recreation out there that they're.
They were camping, camping, homeless people camping in in the back.
Okay.
Areas in the woods and stuff, and so it wasn't an issue for most of the summer because there were only one or two. But then when a whole bunch of people came in, ten, twelve. Different groups came in, then there started to be a. Uh, you know, a lot more drugs and fights and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then there are a lot of arrests, so then the council cleaned it up and said that was it.
Okay.
So a lot of the homelessness discussions that those were kind of centered on on that. That area.
And they were clearly, they were clearly sleeping there. It was. I think that is the, that's the other issue is that we, you don't know who. They're just hanging out in downtown Montpelier.
Yeah, are these folks just hanging out or are they actually homeless or? Or who are the problem ones, you know? There may be a mix.
Yeah.
Homeless and not homeless, and we just don't know who the problem ones are.
What about um, have we looked at uh, and like if we know there's some hot spots, have we, have we looked at putting cameras up or anything like that? Just so that they're. We could identify people.
Police department, they'd have to.
There's some deterrent effect to just knowing that somebody can see exactly who you are if somebody makes a complaint. Because because you're right, the fourteen year old girl, I mean. Any fourteen, anybody is gonna put their head down and just get the heck out of there, right? They're not gonna look at, see who they are, but they could say at this time I was walking through and they can go look and they'll see exactly who it was.
Yeah, I don't stop to have a conversation when I am engaged by them. It's a. This day, polite, good afternoon, and we keep moving. Uh, but yes, I was thinking that cameras and and just a sign that says, you know, area under video surveillance probably. Could have some effect as well.
All right, those, there's like see something, say something signs like that have phone numbers that you can call if something happens. We just to get the sense of that, that it's. That someone's looking at this, you know. Because it is such a like a. An unused part of town. You know, I think Montpelier Live was thinking like if we could have like food trucks. On in that transit center parking lot, like something to draw people to.
If there was more activity, it would clean it.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that is like a hundred percent true. If there was activity there.
Yeah.
This would go away.
I love the idea of food trucks.
Love the idea of food trucks right there.
The the Confluence Park idea is um, currently dead, um, I believe, right?
Yep, and I spoke to the. The woman who was trying to spearhead that and she thinks it's like. Very clearly related to the situation on the bike path that people are like, why would we spend more money there if we already spent all this money? And we've seen how it's gone, you know, like, why do we, why would we put more money into this? Which is kind of, I think, a larger fear is that the city gets skittish about spending these. Money like this on huge infrastructure projects if. The projects fail. You know. I mean, the the path is currently not used, it's failing. People are using the parking lots, they're using the train tracks. Not many people go on that part of the the path.
Yeah, I did walk on it this past week even um. Just walking by and walking the dog, pushing the stroller and. It was. There was quite a few people out and. They, I was. Yeah, offered to engage in conversation that I declined.
Yeah. But also I feel like that sense of unease is also. An issue, you know, like the the feeling of not feeling secure in a space is it is itself. An issue because you're not going to want to go back there. Getting threatened is like a whole other level.
Yeah, for sure, that I. I, it's always something that, you know, I think about, but I've never had a, had to think about. Something that negative.
But I'm I'm saying like even, but even that like feeling of apprehension itself, you don't want people to have when they're using public parks. You know, like, that's not a good. That's not good design if people are like. Have to like brace themselves, use a public park, you know.
Yeah.
So I mean, I would be interested if we had more commission members here to see what they would.
I think we should bring it up again. I would support some kind of letter from. This commission to the city council asking them to do some things. Certainly, I think we could add some language to the. Public safety part of it. I mean, it's such an important resource. I I didn't know. I mean, I'm one of the members of the community that wouldn't have known that this was an issue. If you hadn't, you know, brought it up, although I I have seen that little area and it does look a little, you know, it's a little sketchy and dirty, right? Like, you know that, but. Um, you know, you want people to use these resources. You want people to feel like this is a place to visit or to live, you know, like. And that's part of it is that we have these great resources.
Yeah, and Montpelier Live that too, that people. Get dropped off at the transit center from whatever, you know, method of transport they're using. And then their instinct is to use the bike path to get to downtown and like that's their first, their first view of Montpelier is. That, you know, which is, right, Sean.
Well, thanks for bringing it up. Thanks, I I think there's some low hanging fruit. Just cleaning the place up. Is.
Cleaning up. It's the old broken windows theory, right? Like, if you have broken windows, you have crime. If you got overgrown stuff that people can hide under the hedges, they're like, nobody cares about this. Nobody's looking at it.
Yeah, I think it exactly is what it is.
We had stopped, I had to stop, I was pushing the stroller and we had to stop and watch them put in the new car chargers. Because they had a mini excavator over there behind. Behind the hardware store and then just even standing there looking at. All the stuff growing into the bike path and and now that they've got their, the railroad is working on the.
Oh.
On the track and that is now chain link fenced and you're constrained and there's. Chain link fence on one side and there's. All the vegetation growing in from the other.
I do take my photography classes there because it's like a beautiful version of like urban Gothic, you know.
I'm not sure that that's such an endorsement.
I know, I'm like, guys, do you see the railroad, like the weeds? It's all coming together right here.
Frankenstein's just come right out of the bushes.
Their photos are stunning in that sense, but I don't know if that's.
I think you could eliminate the weeds and still get some good urban architect.
Like in the shrubbery too. I feel like there's like a lot of like hiding spots or like farther on the bike path where I run. There's nowhere to, like, there's no shade. There's nowhere to go. And no one.
Do you, do you head?
Like towards Agway.
Yeah.
Yeah. And no, I mean, no one hangs out there.
No, right.
Because it's. Hot, there's no shade, it's overgrown, but it's, there's no, there's nothing. There's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to hang out, you know. It is purely a path and it's, I think, widely used. I see people there all the time.
I'm sure the cities, I mean, there used to be, it seems like when we moved here, there was a change to some loitering policy. I don't know exactly what that was, Mike. Do you remember? There was something and then we kind of freed it up and then there was a lot of panhandling that was going on. I don't know if we pushed back on that, but. I mean, we like people to be able to. Visit and sit on a, on a, you know, sit on a uh, bench and, you know, drink a cup of coffee or whatever they're gonna do, but. Do you remember that background at all, Mike, about the? Loitering ordinance or anything?
Um, I don't, that's not one. That I was able to.
When did you come on board?
Two thousand fourteen. I mean, it may have happened and I.
It was right around that. I think it was right around that time. Maybe a little bit after. I mean, I'm not proposing that, but it's just, what what do you do, you know? So interesting, you go to these, you go to different communities, right? And you see they have the same kind of infrastructure and it's beautiful and you don't have the problems and you just wonder like, okay. What's, what are their policies? Like, how do they manage to, because clearly there's people that are affluent. Somebody would love to shake down and get some money out of, but they don't have the same problems and why is that? I don't.
Oh, it's Aaron. He has joined us, we have a quarrel.
Here I was. Running through my security protocols.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry for being late. I'm I'm actually in Montana and I forgot that it was two hours. As opposed to one, so.
Oh, my god.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know if we need to go and jump into all the other stuff.
Now that we have a quarrel.
But we can.
Is there anything that you need to get done, Mike, since we have Aaron here or is, can it all wait? What do you think?
No, I mean, if people want to take, take a look at um, what I sent out on the energy notes this afternoon. That would be.
I looked at it, I would just say I'm very unqualified. Maybe you guys have better background.
Yeah, it was, yeah, most of. So we got a lot of comments. And. I went through and tried to. So we wrote energy was one of the earlier chapters or earlier ones that we did, maybe twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They did a big. Planning project in twenty twenty one. So a lot of the stuff, and then we didn't update the chapter, so. It, they rightly went through and said that you got, you're missing all this stuff. So I went through, read the new plan. And tried to go back to the same format. They had sent some comments along which would have been about. Uh, uh, added a couple more goals. I know we have a goal of trying to. Minimize the number of goals, so the first three goals that are of the six talk about the municipal and the next three talk about. The community because we have a twenty thirty goal of being net. Excuse me, being net zero and a twenty fifty goal to be net zero for the community. So twenty thirty is to be government. City Hall, all these buildings would be net zero and then the other ones are about. How do we make the community net zero by twenty fifty? Um, so that's why we've got six, but they would have had a lot more if we kind of followed theirs. That's why I squished them down, but. The idea was really just to start looking at. If if it looks okay, and for folks who've. Kind of been through this before, if it looks like we're heading in the right direction, I can go and start. Pulling all these together and then I I laid out strategies based on those goals.
I will say that I read it all and I didn't have any problems with any of it, but I also felt like somebody else should be looking at this that isn't, isn't me.
Yeah, I did send it to the chair and vice chair of of MEAC to go and take a peek at and get their input as well. Um, and I'm gonna go. To the MEAC committee in October, but. I kind of need to pull it together, so I figured if we had enough people and people had thoughts, you can send them to me. You don't have to go over it tonight, but if you've got thoughts, if you think. You know, um, some of these kind of look okay. It's it's really rough. I mean, it's just putting things in a couple of of boxes. So you've got one, goals one through six and then strategies. For goal one, strategies for goal two. Um, and those are mostly based on those reports, so I I think it all looks good.
Do we feel good enough to tell Mike to keep working on it?
Well, I have a question, Mike. Yeah. Um, so goal number two, it says reduce climate impacts of fossil fuel use in schools and municipalities. Is it just reduces fossil fuel use? What, I don't understand why the climate impacts of is in there.
Um, yeah, that's true. And I was trying to insert and I'll and I'll go and see if their wording was. If they were talking about the the climate impacts. Because it might just be reduced fossil fuel use in schools and municipal facilities through conversion to non-fossil fuels and other measures.
Or like reduce climate impacts by reducing. Fossil fuel use in schools.
Yep, and we might be able to just emphasize climate impacts in the storyboard portion. Because really, when we get to the, to the goals, it may just be.
I think everybody knows why we're reducing.
Yeah, why is doing that? That's from the storyboard.
And then the third goal, is there? And you just said twenty thirty, is there like a date attached to that or is that just? All vehicles used by schools. Is there a goal?
Um. All three, one, two, and three are all supposed to be. Reaching net zero. It's actually in the aspiration, which I didn't write. The aspiration will remain the same. The aspiration says we'll be twenty thirty, net zero by twenty thirty.
That's the city.
The city.
Yeah.
City government. And then Montpelier as a whole will be net zero by twenty fifty, so that's working with. Property owners to weatherize their houses and convert from oil heat to some other non-fossil fuel heat. Those types of things. How do we, you know, it's it's a much, it's much easier to do it for the city government because we are in. You know, we're kind of in. We can tell ourselves what to do. It's more difficult to go and tell. Community members. Everybody may want to do it, but they may not be able to afford it.
Right, so, yeah, that, so goal number six then. I, I guess it's fine, it's fine, but uh. Yeah, obviously, a lot of the stuff in here. Doing this, having the city do things is within our control and having. Individuals do them. Is very much outside. Of.
Right.
Our control, as it should be. But it's, I think it's, I think it's fine that some of these things. You know, they're good goals to have, good aspirations to have. Uh, and and I wonder. You know, at least in the near term, we're gonna run into a. Like preferred contractor type situation where we realize that, oh man, we need to uh, actually kind of. Pause this requirement.
Yes, so some of the questions that will, some of the things that MEAC will bring up is like, well, we could have. Different energy standards. If you're building something new, then you have to meet a higher energy standard and we could adopt that as an ordinance. Now that. Affects all new buildings and that doesn't affect. The existing, but it helps to make sure new buildings get built to certain codes and there may be.
Well, you could do things with rent, people that are have rental properties have to conform by a certain date. I mean, there's some enforcement mechanisms that you could put into play.
Yeah, if there's, if there was the the political muscle to to do it, there are different things. If you, if the city wanted to raise funds to do a revolving loan fund where. You know, maybe it costs thirty thousand dollars to weatherize a house. Well, we could loan you the thirty thousand dollars. You know, maybe it costs thirty thousand dollars to weatherize a house. Well, we could loan you the thirty thousand dollars, zero percent, and then. That goes as a mortgage on your property. And when you sell your property, you give us the money back and we can loan it to somebody else. Um, but of course we need to raise all that money first. So where, where do we get that seed money to start that type of revolving loan fund? You know, there, there's small things, you know, there, there are people that do window inserts and there are people that do different, different smaller things. But I think if we're gonna reach net zero, it's gonna be more than just weatherizing storm windows. It's gonna be. You know, how do we actually deep weatherize houses to, to get them? Maybe not necessarily to net zero, but at least. Better than they were. You know, I, I like to use as an example, the house I had lived in before I moved, it was in East Hardwick. And when we bought it, it had. Used nine hundred gallons of fuel oil to heat. When I sold it. It wasn't using any fuel oil. It would, you, if you used the, the wood stove, it would use a quart of wood. Um, if you use the, the oil stove, it would use, if you use the, still use the furnace, it would use about seventy-five gallons a year.
Wow.
So.
You did a good job.
Yeah. So you can weatherize houses really, really well to, to, you know, to really knock a lot of that out and, um. You know, I've got a lot of work to do in my new house. But yeah, but those are the types of investments that if everybody did it. You could dramatically decrease the amount of home heating fuel that is being used to heat the houses. Um, that doesn't get cars off the road, but it does get. Um, heating fuel, and that's probably the easiest one for the city to try to tackle is how do we work with people to get their houses to be. More. Deep weatherized. What are the programs that we could do to help that happen? There's a lot of incentives through efficiency Vermont, but it's not enough to get everybody to do it. So what can we do to help to get us over the lim, over that line? But those are the things that, that's what we rely on the. MEAC to try to come up with. How do we, how do we do that? And they've, they focused on the twenty thirty, rightfully so. That's the deadline that's coming up the quickest and. Let's figure out how we can do. City government. And then. Um, that's why I think one of the big ones for them is to come up with a twenty fifty plan. There are a lot of ideas. Maybe we could do this. Maybe we could do that. At some point, MEAC has to. Hire a consultant to come up with a twenty fifty plan, just like they did for their twenty thirty plan. And really lay it out and says. These are the best ways to get. Efficiency work done. That's the first goal four is how do we make houses more efficient? Energy efficiency, weatherization. Group, you know, uh, strategy five, how do we get people to have their houses off fossil fuels? So. You're not cooking with gas, you're not, uh, heating with oil. You're still gonna need heat. So maybe their heat pumps, maybe that's wood chip. Or pellet stoves. Maybe you're on district heat in some cases, if you're a commercial building in the downtown. And then six is how do we get people out of their cars or how do we get people to buy electric cars? It's gonna be harder for us. Burlington actually offers incentives. They, they, they have their own electric department and they. Match. I think some of the state incentives. So if you want to buy an electric car, Burlington, but that's there. That's how they do it.
Aaron's got a hand up.
Uh, yeah, thanks. I just have two quick questions. Number one is like, it sounded like, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you've given this to MEAC for some feedback. And if that's the case, when do you expect that feedback? Cause I think I might have some stuff to add, but. Not right now.
Yeah, if you've got, if you've got stuff to email at some point, I'm getting. I'm trying not to make this be fifty more iterations. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm trying to work with the key people, Kate and. The chair, uh, whose name escapes me right now. Um, and we're gonna. Get their comments, get some of your comments, just so that when I put it all together into a new draft. I will take that to them. Like October seventeenth to the whole of MEAC. And then you'll get some comments back. So probably in November, we'll be able to have a conversation of. What the final draft looks like.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then the second question is in the strategy six for the development of the twenty fifty plan. It's add EV charge, I'm sorry, it's the zoning to allow for EV charges without permits. What's the permitting structure now?
So currently, actually, that's, that was really just to go through and point out. The fact that EV chargers don't need permits. So right now we actually removed EV chargers as a, as a permit item. As long as the EV charger is associated with a permitted parking space. Then it doesn't need a permit.
Okay. So this is just, this is the status quo.
Yep, this is the status quo. So yeah, sometimes we talk about strategies. Some of it is just continue what we're doing. And sometimes we want to let people know what it is we're doing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't aware of any permitting requirements. That's why I asked. So thank you.
What is a home labeling ordinance?
I've got to get the exact. Name of it. There is a. Requirement that was passed. I'm not sure personally if I think it's actually. Working or worthwhile. Certainly when I bought my house, I didn't get any information on it. So. They. Few years back, there was a request in that if we required. Sellers of homes to give a energy efficiency report. That it would encourage, uh, and provide information to buyers. As to the energy efficiency and buyers will then shop around for the best. Most energy efficient home and it will encourage sellers to make energy improvements to their home.
Assumes there's any houses to buy.
Truth is. My, in my opinion, I, I, you know, I thought this was just. This was, you know, you know, one, whatever the expression is, or one, one thing too cute or whatever. It's just, yeah, it's. Just go after the issue and don't try. Being fluffy around the edges and go through and tell real estate agents, they have to go and post labels as to how efficient the house is. And there was a specific program that you had to go through. Like I said, I just bought a house. I never saw any report. I never asked for. I had a house that I could afford that was available and I put a bid on it and.
If the house is, has energy improvements done to it, you will hear about it.
Yeah, and this one had no energy efficiency to it at all and I still paid. Asking price. So.
That's actually pretty lucky.
Yeah, you only paid asking price?
No bidding war?
No, I died. Well, at the top of my, top of my thing, I told my agent, I'm like, that's it. That's all we can afford. And we were very happy to see that we won. So. But yeah, that's what the home labeling ordinance is. Um, there's, there's enforcement pieces and other pieces that were kind of waves and tabled and put off to the side and. I don't know how much actual enforcement goes into it. So, but it is an actual thing that is on the books, so we'll.
It exists.
Describe it. It does exist.
Okay. Fascinating.
I do, I do think I sold some condos and I do think I had to have some. Report and they were brand new and I thought it was bizarre.
No, that's because you crossed your teeth and dot your i's, Gabe.
I, well, I probably had somebody coming from the city that was gonna inspect it or something. So I had this, I know I had a report. But yeah. I wouldn't be surprised that some people don't.
It's possible if there was some, uh, if, if you had a real estate agent who just knew the rule existed, they may. Do it.
I might have had a real estate agent that might have known something about the way the city operated.
It might have felt it's in their best interest to make sure that they followed. The rules that had been passed.
Might have.
So, and my real estate agent did not. I'm sure my real estate agent knew about it and chose not to do it anyways. So, but.
Worried that you would shop around?
No. He used to work for me, so I know. I knew his opinion on the. The home labeling ordinance. So didn't surprise me if he didn't follow it. But. So yeah, that's, if people have thoughts or comments, let me know. Like I said, most of this was not to really get into a big debate about the details of it, more just. You know, if. I have to now turn, you know, this pretty piece of paper into that nice board that's out on the wall. And so if we're gonna put in that much effort. If anybody had thoughts at the start of. I like the way it was done before. But.
No, you should go ahead.
I will go ahead and make, make up of another draft, basically another first draft and I'll run it by MEAC and I'll run it back to you guys in November and we'll. Hopefully get it finalized.
Then do you want to? Put that back out then for public input or? You know, wait.
That will be up to you guys.
Okay.
Let's see how that goes.
Do you?
When you guys see it, when you guys see it, I don't think you have to make the decision now.
I'd, I imagine we spent a bunch of money having a consultant work on some things, right?
But this is, uh, there's, this is also going to carry over to the storyboard then as well.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be storyboard changes. There.
So we should. We should put it back out there.
Uh, there is eventually going to be a full public hearing. So ye, yes, we will eventually obviously have to go back out. The question is, do we go back out for one more round before? And that may be something that when we get. To the end, as I said, we're gonna go through twelve chapters. That was our goal is get through all twelve chapters. We'll see where we're at.
Right.
And.
What's our timeline, Mike? When do we think we're gonna get through all of them?
It was supposed to be this fall, but we've kind of gotten ourselves a little, we didn't meet in August and.
We're gonna make it.
We're gonna make it. We got, we got all of our.
We're doing really well for the first six. The only one that really seems is, is really the energy one. That's the only one that seems to be needing more work. But we knew this when we did this. We're gonna do twelve. And after we do twelve. You know, everyone's like, well, it's not ready. It's not ready. So well, we're gonna do twelve. We're gonna end up with like two or three that people want to talk more about. And for the most part, I think. We've done our first six and we've have. Housing that needs a little more conversation, but I actually think it's pretty good. I think it's pretty close. And energy that needed a lot more work. Now we're starting our next three in the next meeting. And then we'll figure that out, which we actually have to talk a little bit about the next meeting. Because that lands on Columbus Day or Indigenous Person's Day. And. I don't know if we want to push that to Tuesday. Or if we want to just meet on that Monday. I don't know what everyone's schedule looks like.
Is it a city holiday?
It is, it is a city holiday.
So you won't be working?
Well, I could. Unfortunately, I have another meeting on Tuesday night, so it kind of pushes me in a pinch, but if everybody said. They were out, then that's great. I'll, I'll bump my other meeting on Tuesday.
I could probably make it.
Uh, but if everyone was like, nah, we're not doing anything anyways.
I, I have Tuesday conflicts, so I could.
You have a Tuesday conflict too?
I, I could make it on Monday.
Okay. I think I could make it on.
I don't know. I usually can make it, but I also know I like, if my wife had the day off, then we might like to do something, but we'll figure it out.
But it's also going to be a public input session.
Yeah, so we can't, probably can't do it as a public input session though.
We put it to Wednesday? That's just a public input.
Let me take, let me take a look and. What, how were people on Thursdays?
I, I have a standing. I always, I always have a conflict on Thursdays.
Okay, so Wednesdays would be probably this.
But you can have a quorum without me, so.
I think it's more the public. If. They're not here on.
Yeah, I'll have to see if it's a council night. I don't know. When council is, they. Kind of bump around a little bit. So. If it's a council night, then Wednesday probably won't work. That's why I was asking about Thursday as a fallback, just in case.
I think I could do that.
I can normally do a Wednesday and I can't do a Thursday, but I think you've done Thursdays before and had enough members show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I coach, I coach Tuesday, Thursdays.
Tuesday, Thursday. Okay, so that's two people out on Thursdays and we're already two people down. So that kind of.
Have there been any applications to be on the mission?
I have to see. So.
I tell, I tell people.
Brian isn't coming back. So, right.
I know.
Yep. So. Uh, he, his term is gonna be up as well, so. We will now have two seats to fill. But Gabe is coming back and Maria is coming back. So we've got two of the four.
Submitted my application.
Oh, that's right. And, and Sean, cause.
Technically, I'm wrapping up. You came in mid-year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And technically Carlton's seat is a one-year seat. So we have a one-year seat and a two-year seat. That's open.
What did I apply for? Am I going into a two-year or a one?
This will be going into a two-year seat. Yep. Cause you're filling your existing.
Okay, so this is.
So they'll, you'll just coordinate offline with Ariana.
Yeah, we'll coordinate and let everybody know what the date is.
Okay.
But. Doesn't sound like Monday. Doesn't sound like Tuesday. Doesn't sound like Thursday. We'll see if Wednesday works.
And this is the ninth and tenth that we're discussing, October ninth and tenth? Or no?
Fourteen?
Later.
Is it farther?
Next Monday is.
Monday seventh.
It's on every other Monday.
Yeah, we are.
Second Monday.
It's the second and, second and fourth. So we are the fourteenth and twenty eighth.
Sixteenth and seventeenth. So we're discussing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see if the sixteenth. Is a council meeting or not. I don't think it is. So sixteenth might work. Because they are also second and fourth. So usually they are the same week that we are, except that the first is on Tuesday. So. They're meeting the ninth and twenty-third.
Okay.
So. Unless they've moved it on, but we'll find out. And I will let you guys know. And that's, that's it for my.
And, and we probably don't need to adjourn because we never really opened, right?
Right.
I have a question for you guys about the bike path though. Should I? I mean, you mentioned like opening up to like from porch forum, which I was scared to do. I was like worried about like the, the avalanche of. There would have been a lot of people in.
I, I think, it sounds like you have enough.
Okay.
Information anecdotally for us to. First of all, make an additional input into the public safety plan. And then second of all, to write something I, that I would endorse. Like if you drafted something, I would endorse it and send it, you know. Room mic to the city council, asking them to, you know, have a hearing on it or something.
And I'll bring it up with the leadership team. And the leadership team. At the city are all the department heads. So we, we meet. At least once a week, sometimes twice a week to talk about issues. And it may just be something that. We find out from them what they think is a good approach. I mean, we've got. Everybody from the community justice center who's on the leadership team to the rec director, to the parks director, to the police, to the fire. So. They may have some ideas of. What, you know? Maybe they, maybe they want to. Sponsor a meeting or host a meeting that. Is a more of a public conversation about it.
That's what I was, so I was gonna say. I think everyone knows it's an issue. Like I think everybody in Montpelier knows that this is. A part of town that is unsafe. But I think it's when you hear like the individual stories that you get a sense of like how. Dangerous it potentially is. And so even just.
And there's not a solution on the horizon.
Right. Like it's only city councils. You're like, wait, what? People are congregating on the bike path? I think, but I think it's like, once they hear those like actual stories of what people are having to put up with. That. It can change minds. So. Maybe it's a public meeting, like you're saying, or. Or in the letter.
We can put it as an, on, on agenda for next steps and I'll, I'll talk, see what the. Leadership team wants to, how they want to, you know, what they suggest doing. It's cause they. This is gonna be bigger than. Just the planning department or whoever. So. And it may be an issue that just the manager's office has to go and take on to go through and say, this is a bigger topic and. They just had a big. Issue. They were addressing it with, with the legislature and with the, the administration about what to do with the homeless. Uh, they need shelter. Where, where do we shelter them? Where do they go to get shelter if they're not allowed on state land, not allowed on city land? You know, they've got to be somewhere. So what's the solution? And. We're gonna have to have this type of conversation as well. What do we do in this situation? When things are unsafe.
Yeah. I mean, one of the mothers said to me, she's like, do I have to wait? Yeah, I mean, one of the mothers said to me, she's like, do I have to wait for more? Does a kid have to be raped before? The city will do something about that, you know, and it's kind of like. And the fact that kids are scared to tell adults what's happening, I think is.
You could see how terrible could happen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I just want to make sure that. Our concerns are also wrapped in this kind of like, it's. The concern isn't just like this generic, like, eh, it's kind of sketchy. Like, the concern is that we've talked to people. And it's a really dangerous situation. Um, I mean, I'm probably gonna keep asking everyone.
You could probably even format what you have as a spreadsheet. As an attachment, and like, we could, we could all sign the cover letter. Like, I would support that. You, you've done interviews, right? Like, you've talked to people, here's anecdotal data. Somebody else can go out, the police department can go out and do their own if they want to do it, but it sounds like if you were able to do this without a lot of like detective work, right? You just talk to some people, that's like.
Looking like.
Yeah.
I mean, like at soccer games, like, oh, hey, you take the bike path? And I literally have like asked everybody I know.
Yeah, I would, I would totally support doing something formal.
Okay, I mean, should we push it off to the next meeting to like? Like formally?
Well, I think somebody probably needs to draft something, right?
Right, yeah, if you have something to present.
Drafted by the next meeting.
Meeting, we can. Yeah, we just send it to us beforehand, we all.
And we can put it in the next, next steps item on the agenda.
Thank you, guys, for listening to it.
Yeah.
And it's like, it's like sticking your head out, and it's.
Well, it's.
It is, yeah.
It's, it's also something that I, I don't know, man, just that I. Yeah, just. Right, it's my privilege that I get to. Brush it off a little bit. Even though it's not fun, but I don't. Well, I just. Can brush it off, but. Obviously.
It is scary.
We need to not brush it off.
Right.
Yep. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Mike.
All right, I guess we'll see you whenever we see you.
Yeah, whenever. We'll let everybody know when the next meeting is. All right.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thanks a lot.
Have a good trip, Aaron.
Thanks, everybody.